This is the time that we will call this council meeting to order those that will. We're gonna ask Reverend Frank Broyle with the Intervave Mission Service will lead us in our invocation. Following that, Councilman Mark Russell will lead us in our pledge. Will you stand, please?
Let us unite in prayer. We begin by acknowledging the enormous responsibility and the high privilege of life in the public square. Life together, citizens joined with the purpose of weaving a more perfect union here at home. We thank you Creator and sustainer of life for this opportunity like no other, to govern and to be governed, to deliberate and shape the common good, what is noble and enduring and right. Great Governor, we accept the challenge that comes with life in the public square, the challenge of service and commitment, and we pledge ourselves to do the best we can in this room tonight, to pay full respect to each other and full regard for the excellent quality of life that we all want for this community. This is our hope and our prayer offered in the confidence of that hope that never dies. Amen.
Please face the flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
I want to thank Reverend Frank Broyle for the invocation and Councilman Mark Russell for leading the pledge. The minutes have been received from the last meeting, and of course, at this time then I would acknowledge our resolutions and special recognition from the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. If I could ask Kenny Anderson to come forward for the CAFI awards, our Youth of the Month awards, and Kenny, we may need to do it from up here, from the microphone right here, and we can ask everybody else come forward who is here with the CAFI crew, and would you like to introduce our Youth of the Month?
I sure will. Thank you, Mayor. Family members can come up too if they want to at this time. Each month we have the privilege of recognizing a young person in a community who is doing something outstanding, and this month is no different as we have an opportunity to acknowledge Kaia Black. She has a very impressive resume. She has a very impressive resume, and I'll just read a few things that she is doing as a ninth grader at Buckhorn High School. She is the daughter of an Air Force veteran whose service includes work as a professional firefighter with the DOD. Her mother is an Army veteran. She is a third-generation Girl Scout, and she is actively involved following up in the legacy of her parents and her grandparents. She has given service to the Special Olympics and wounded warriors. Her maternal grandmother is also an Army veteran. She is a talented artist, an honor roll student, making straight A's, a National Junior Honor Society member, and she volunteers at the Victory Alliance Ranch no less than 40 hours per month. In that capacity, she works with the rehabilitative services for disabled veterans and their families. She is also a Special Olympics equine coach, and we're very proud of that and understand that the person that you were coaching actually placed...
We had three classes he entered in at the Special Olympics, and he got three golds.
Outstanding. Ladies and gentlemen, the June 2016 Rocket City Broadcasting CAFI Young Citizen of the Month is Kaia Black. Now Kaia, you're surrounded by a lot of people who support what you do, and they're just gonna share some things with you at this time. We'll start with Dr. Hobbs.
I tell you, Kaia, as the founder and a 30-year Army retired veteran, I take my hat off to you, and I salute what you and your parents are doing for our military service. And on behalf of Mr. Jay Stowe Huntsville Utilities, we would like to present you with a gift bag, and as I always like to say, there's something in here to help you mentally, physically, and financially, and continue to do the great things you do in our community. You represent this program well. God bless you.
Thank you.
Congratulations. My name's Jimbo. I represent Rocket City Broadcasting. We just wanted to give you a prize pack too, but that's what we call it. Dr. Hobbs calls it a gift pack. We call ours prize packs in the radio business. It's over there. I'll give it to you later, but it's full of fun things and things that will save you money too. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Hi, Kaia. I represent the Optimist Club of Huntsville. It's an organization that's been around 70 years, helping with the development of young people, and the things that you do are the things that we espouse. So on behalf of the Optimist Club of Huntsville, I'd like to present you this little token of our appreciation.
Thank you.
The reason I said family members can come up is because our hands are gonna be full in just a few moments.
Hi, Kaia. I'm Clarine Teague Johnson with the Human Relations Commission for the City of Huntsville, and I'm going to present you your certificate for all the fine work that you have done. I guess it's jewelry. I'll hold it down. The fine work that you have done in the City of Huntsville, and continue the good work. Congratulations, sweetheart.
Thank you.
Hi, Kaia. I'm Captain Jeffrey Rice with the Huntsville Police Department, and on behalf of our... and on behalf of our police chief, Mark McMurray, and all the Huntsville Police Officers, we would like to recognize you for your exemplary service to our community. I charge and challenge you to continue the things that you have been doing and continue to do those things, and be a beacon and a shining light in this community. Congratulations.
We gotta get away from the squeal here, Kaia. Come on up here. On behalf of the city, I want to thank you so much for being such an inspiration for our area. This is a coin from the city that's given to people who make a difference in our city, our area, our county, and in the whole North Alabama area. So thank you so much. Here's your coin, and thank you so much for what you've done. Kaia, congratulations. Oh, get your picture with all the family there. Now if I could ask Chief Mark McMurray to come up. Chief McMurray, I think you have some people here that we want to award for some lifesaving and doing some special things in the city who are on our police force.
Yes, sir. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council, for this opportunity to recognize a few of Huntsville's finest, and today you'll see bravest as well. First two, I want to talk to you about what happened on January 2nd, 2016, if Officer Tyler Edwards and Whitney Summerville will come up here, please. Seems like more and more are officers having to deal with both drug addiction and mental illness, and on this occasion, 57-year-old male decided after his long stint with drug addiction and family problems, he wanted to end his life. They were dispatched to the University Drive Overpass, which is right over Spartman Drive, where this man was straddling the rail attempting to jump and kill himself. Officer Summerville here, the first officer here, Whitney, I was gonna say the female officer here, she developed a rapport with this man, started talking to him, and even found out they were both from Marshall County, I understand, and while she was distracting him with her conversation, the next officer here, Tyler Edwards, positioned himself to a position of advantage and was able to grab the subject, pull him off the railing. In fact, I think you guys even took his bicycle with... after you captured him and took him to the hospital for treatment, these two even took his bicycle down to Huntsville Hospital so he'd have a way home when they were through. They're very thoughtful. They risked their own life to do this, and they did save the life of this person who was able to get some treatment and is still living today. Thank you very much, you two, and here's an award that both Captain Presley and Captain Jeffrey Rice have to award these two brave officers for. They have both a certificate and, as you see, a medal to go on their uniforms from this point on and to add to their career. These medals are not the highest award given by the Huntsville Police Department unless you're, of course, the person that they saved. If you were that person, that is the most important medal these two will ever receive. Thank you, guys. If you'll wait just a second. If I could have Officer Jeremiah Higgins, Officer Stephen Hopkins, and Renard Robinson come up to the front, please. Let me tell you what these three got involved in, 'cause you never know when you put this uniform on what's gonna happen that night. Well, this was dark, it was night, and it was on a dead-end street with no lights, and there was nothing but a railroad track back there, and these three get out there about almost 11 o'clock at night, and this woman says, "I called you 'cause my husband's gonna commit suicide, and he said he's gonna kill himself on the railroad track, and if that doesn't work, he's gonna make a police officer kill him, 'cause he's through. He's gonna have a suicide by cop." Officer Higgins and Hopkins and Renard Robinson started looking for him, and then they hear the train coming. They realize there's a problem. They run up on the track and find a man, and as the train's barreling down on them, they have to fight him to get him off the railroad track. Each of them grab an arm and a leg, and they struggle with the guy, and they get him off the track just seconds before the train passes, putting themselves at risk as well. Their selfless courageous actions on placing their own lives at risk saved this man's life. We got him to treatment as well, and he's still with us today as a result. And I guess the most moving point of this is when I read the letter, his wife read to us about how thankful she was because he just skipped some medical treatments, and he was mentally ill. He needed some medication, and he's still alive today because of what these three did. Thank you again for allowing us to bring their family, which are sitting down here in the front, their children, their wives. I see some mothers out here, all part of the community and all part of just another day of work when you're a police officer. Thank you, guys. We appreciate you all.
Thank you so much, Chief. Thank you to our captains who came up, and especially to those officers who've done a great job for us. So thank you again. That's all I have, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mayor. Council, adoption. One resolution congratulating the Huntsville District Church of God in Christ on hosting the Alabama First Jurisdiction Church of God in Christ 2016 Juridictional Auxiliaries in Ministry Conference from June 19th through June 24th, 2016, at the True Life Church of God in Christ.
I second the chair's motion.
It's been moved and properly second that this resolution would be approved. Those that favor the motion, would you indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Poses no. This resolution will be presented during the 19th through the 24th period that they will be in session. At that time, I will make the presentation on behalf of the mayor and the council. Are there other special recognitions? I would ask that we would note some deletions from the agenda tonight, Agenda Item 15J and Agenda Item 16A1. I've also been informed that the administration is asking for an item to be added to the agenda tonight. That item would deal with the GE Development Agreement, a project that will be asked to approve through resolution.
Ms. Chairman?
At this time, I would ask for a motion to add this item.
Ms. Chairman, I move to add the item GE Project Site Purchase Resolution to the agenda under 15S.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second that this new item, the GE project, will be added to the agenda, and it will be 15S, the last item on our new business section of the agenda. Those that support the motion, would you indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Poses no. That item passed, and it has been added to the agenda. Business with outside legal representation, public hearing, public hearings to be held, public hearings to be set. Number one, there's a resolution to set a public hearing on the ordinance zoning newly annexed property lying on the east side of Weatherford Drive and on the north side of Harbin Road to Resident 1A District, set for July 28th, 2016.
Ms. Chairman, I move to set the hearing for July 28th, 2016.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second that this hearing will be set for July 28th, 2016. Those that support that motion, would you indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Poses no. That has passed. A resolution to set a public hearing on an ordinance rezoning property lying on the east side of First Street and on the north side of Freeman Road from Heavy Industry District to Resident 2 District, set July 28th, 2016.
Ms. Chairman, I move to set the hearing for July 28th, 2016.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second that this hearing will be set for July 28th, 2016. A resolution to... A resolution to set a hearing for suspension of licensure for certain taxpayers.
Ms. Chairman, I move to approve the resolution.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second to approve this hearing to suspend license for taxpayer. Those that support the motion, would you indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Poses no. It has passed. A resolution to set a hearing for suspension of licensures for certain taxpayers.
Ms. Chairman, I move to set the hearing.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second that this would be approved. Those that support it, would you indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Poses no. It has passed. Last resolution to set a public hearing on an ordinance rezoning property lying on the west side of Jeff Road and south of Capshaw Road from Resident 2 District to Resident 2A District, set July 28th, 2016.
Ms. Chairman, I move to set the hearing on July 28th, 2016.
Second.
It's been moved and properly second that this hearing will be set on July 28th, 2016. Those that support that motion, would you indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Poses no. It has passed. Communications and reports, communications from the public. Dr. TC Johnson.
Pastor TC Johnson, 1800 Spark, Winging Good Evening, Dr. Charles Councilman and Mayor. I just rose to say thank you for whatever assistance that you're giving us, reference to J.O. Johnson legacy. We had written a letter on the 9th of May to President McCauley and the rest of the board by certified mail, and had not heard earlier this week from that particular request from the community. And to date, I understand there's some things going on to try to help us preserve J.O. Johnson's legacy. Across this country and across the South especially, a number of African-American schools have been closed, and those legacies were not preserved. I think it's a great thing that Huntsville is getting behind this effort to ensure that when the alumni of Johnson come, they have a place to rally to for their memory. And we just... I just wanted to rise and say thank everyone who's involved with making that come to fruition. Earlier this morning, I looked on the website for the Huntsville City Schools, and the sale sign was still up. I haven't looked again today, and certainly I hope that we can make sure that that's happening. And so I just rose to say thank you to whoever is involved with getting that done. I think that makes Huntsville maybe one of the first places I've heard of where the legacies of those kinds of schools are being preserved. So I just want to say thank you for your efforts.
Good evening. Is it a public hearing that I get to talk to? Last meeting, I'm standing right here. Anyway, I want to thank you for laying the public into it. I also want to thank all the police officers for the good work that they do. I hope you think about them and all the city employees when that 5% raise comes up, 'cause I'm asking you for that. 1% last time didn't help any. I'm asking you to help these people that need some help. They do a great job. They lay their lives on the line and do a lot of help. I see that the slides is going down Holmes Avenue. That's in my neighborhood. When y'all bring the big-city, big-town boys in this city, why don't you lay your plans out a little bit better and know what you're gonna do when you're bringing them in here? I don't know how it's gonna turn out over there. I hope they don't run through my house. Maybe they will, who knows? Anyway, I hear the slides is coming to town. And about this Tiger grant that you're getting, can that not be used for... is my light already on? I just got up. Who's in control of the lights tonight? Are you Mayor Battle?
No, ma'am.
Thank you. Anyway, I want to talk to you about Cummings Research Park. I stood here three minutes and did a preaching job while the meeting was going on in my three minutes, last meeting, and then somebody pulled a Swifton, and they had piddled it in, and you voted on the master plan. I'm glad you all had all the heartaches you've had over that, trying to get rid of Sears, trying to get rid of Pennies, and trying to move a movie theater. Does any one of the administrations and anybody sitting up there that makes decisions in this city on any property from Jordan Lane through Research Park, wherever you're going? I want that looked into, and I want that answered. Who all owns property in that area? And I also found out this week that y'all don't know who owns the Coca-Cola plant. It sounds like the Industrial Development Board owns it. That's part of it. They don't? Tax assessor's got it wrong then. Y'all don't know who owns it? Sometimes come up with some answers when I ask you some, 'cause I'm gonna get stronger and better over Cummings Research Park. I'm against it. It's not blighted. You say 50 years it's blighted, it needs to be torn down, we need to take it over and build entertainment districts, sewing party hearty. But anyway, you give 90 years to people, your leases that come to you and want city property, you all hand them 90-year leases and a 70-year leases. How can you do that when you say Cummings Research Park is blighted? What do you think's gonna happen to city property in 90 years? You don't think about that, do you? You don't care, you won't be here. But anyway, Cummings Research Park needs to be go away. Start back, and let's look at that master plan. Cummings Research Park is historical.
Ms. Reed, your time is up. Do you need another minute?
Appreciate it.
Councilman?
Yes.
I said it's gonna be good tonight, but it's pretty hard to be good. When I read the paper, every time I pick up the paper, something just knocks me down. But Cummings Research Park, I've been on that for two months, and I'm gonna be on it for another year, because what I see out here and what's going on and who the developers are, you don't know them. They should've brought it in here. If they bought a piece of property, they should've brought it in here before the public told us what it's gonna do, how much you're gonna spend on it, and what they were gonna do there. But trying to take over Sears and Pennies, I called them. I would've helped them sue you if you take them out of this city. Nothing you could put better in this city than those two right there. And thank God the movie theater guy stood up to you. I'm glad. You all need to start having some common sense and think about what you're doing out here. All you care about, see my hands, is money. That's all you care about in this city. We need a better quality of life. We need the common sense to run this city. Get a hold on it, 'cause I'm gonna be around for quite a while now. Thank you. I love you, no matter what I say. My boss tells me to tell me I love you. Thank you.
Good evening, Mr. President, Mayor, Councilmen, and especially the citizens of Huntsville, Alabama. I rise to ask the city to be generous and compassionate in having the Huntsville Library have a typewriter, and if they cannot afford that typewriter, that the city look into its surplus property and be beneficent, and grant them and give them a typewriter so that they could have a typewriter. Of course, we still need a typewriter to fill out forms for jobs and other things. Everything is not computerized. Secondly, I want to ask that you rethink about this continuous entitlement to some of these boards. You seem to appoint the same people to the board over and over. There should be a term limit so that the citizens of Huntsville could be ingratiated by having the opportunity to serve their city. Secondly, you would be able to refute a heinous entitlement that could creep into some people who continue to serve on these boards without being vetted by their constituents. I think this is a good thing. I have besought and beseeched you on this issue before, but when I come up here and look, it's always the same people. It's not a disparity against those people. They're great people, but you're missing a great opportunity to allow them to train and share that knowledge with someone else. And second... my third thing, I'm concerned about the Human Relations Committee. That commission need a sunset on it because it seemed to be functioning in a dysfunctional manner. I see no evidence of what it does for the city. It seemed to be more entitled with... more concerned with dealing with immigrants and other issues that's none to remain this city. I'm reminded of something I learned in Bible school. Charity begins at home, and there's far too many things that are going wrong in this city to which the city is not addressing. That Human Relations Committee, in my understanding, was designed to address these issues. So far, they have failed to do just that. I have been asking for a reply to my personal complaint for over a year. That's unconscionable. For that, I ask that you do something about it. As always, thank you, and have a happy Father Day and a happy post-Mother Day, Mrs.
Board Apartments. We have no apartments to be voted upon tonight, however, we do have some nominations. The nomination of Dr. Jimmy Wall Jr. for reappointment to the Huntsville Water Utility Board for a term to expire July 1st, 2019, submitted by Councilman Kline. Nomination for Dr. Jimmy Wall Jr. for reappointment to the Huntsville Natural Gas Utility Nomination for Dr. Jimmy Wall Jr. for reappointment to the Huntsville Natural Gas Utility Board for a term to expire July 1, 2019, sponsored by Councilman Kling. Nomination of George Moore for reappointment to the Huntsville Electric Utility Board for a term to expire July 1, 2019, sponsored by Councilman Kling. Approval of expenditures, $5,318,203.80. Second? It's been moved and properly second that we pay the $5,318,203.86. Those that support the motion, which you indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Poses no. It has passed. Is Ms. Sergeant here tonight?
Yes.
Uh, Ms. Sergeant, you have some comments to make to Russ tonight. Would you share with us?
Later this evening, we have an item on the agenda related to a public sale for bonds. It's item 15O. And we will go into some detailed discussion at that time, I believe is how you wanted to handle it, Dr. Showers, related to what's going to be handled. But it will be new money for, uh, the school systems as well as some capital items within the city, as well as refunding of previous bond issues for both the city and the schools.
Okay. Thank you very much. Communications from the mayor.
Thank you, Mr. President. Um, just, um, some of the things that are, that we're, uh, that are happening in the community that I think everybody needs to know about. Yesterday and today, uh, the National Cyber Summit, uh, was taking place here. Over 1,500 people gathered from all over the U.S. and throughout the world for that cyber summit. We had undersecretaries of NSA and, um, and, um, and some other of the government agencies who were here. So we were very well represented and it kind of set Huntsville up as a center of excellence for the, in the cyber world. Tomorrow, Fire Academy graduation, 5:00 p.m. at Space and Rocket Center. Uh, and also Boobies in the Park starts tomorrow night, uh, at 8 o'clock, uh, down, uh, down next to the Art Museum. And on Saturday, we have a welcome home ceremony for Company A, 136 Expedition Signal Corps. Um, they're based out of ARAB, but many of those, uh, many of those soldiers come from the Huntsville-Madison County area. Uh, that will be at 10:30 out at Signature Aviation, uh, out at the airport. And, uh, at 11 o'clock, uh, Saturday, we'll have Flag Day Ceremony, um, at the Veterans' Memorial. Uh, and so you'll, you'll see a lot of activity happening over the next, uh, next couple of days. And, um, we want, want to wish everybody, uh, a, a great weekend, but also to come out and then honor some people who need to be honored, especially those returning from, uh, active duty, uh, overseas. Thank you, Mr. President.
Councilwoman Russell?
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to, uh, thank the mayor and his administration, uh, for helping us open the dog park in Hampton Cove. Uh, it's a great addition to our community and will certainly help with the quality of life. Uh, Parks and Recreation did outstanding job. Landscape Management can certainly grow grass in the middle of this drought. And Animal Services came up with the rules for the large and small dogs, and I really appreciate them. Uh, this Saturday, uh, we have lots going on. I will be at Fern Bell Park, uh, for the Coach Pitch Little League Tournament. It should start at approximately 9 o'clock and, uh, we'll have a great day there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Okay. Councilwoman Robinson?
I had the opportunity last week to visit the African-American Chamber of Commerce. Jerry Mitchell, the, uh, the CEO there invited me to come down and we had a, a great conversation and I was impressed again with, um, the similarity between the concerns of businesses in North Huntsville and businesses in South Huntsville. It was a very productive conversation. I look forward to continuing that. Also had the opportunity this week to, um, attend the groundbreaking for the inpatient hospice at Redstone Village. This is a wonderful partnership between Huntsville Hospital, Hospice Family Care, and Redstone Village. Uh, it's, I attended a, a, a board meeting of Hospice Family Care 10 years ago where we talked about the need for inpatient hospice and if that could ever take place here in Madison County. It's been a long time coming. It's a facility that is very much needed and it's wonderful to see a partnership come together to make something like that happen. Also had the opportunity yesterday to attend the change of command for the Garrison Commander as we said goodbye to Colonel Bill Marks and welcomed Colonel Doc Holliday. Uh, it was, if I, it's the first time I have ever attended a change of command ceremony and it was extremely impressive. We have a wonderful relationship between, uh, the Reds, Redstone Arsenal tenants and the city. And it was, it was just wonderful to see that leadership that was there and how appreciative they were of all that the city does to help Redstone Arsenal be the best installation in, on the planet. That's a direct quote from Colonel Marks. Uh, we have, we do have a lot going on this week. Let me mention a couple of things no one else mentioned, one of which is this is Rocket City Yoga Week. I have had the opportunity to participate in yoga at a number of different sites, including right out here at Birds, at, at the Big Spring, um, last night. And then tomorrow morning at 8:30, I'll also be out there for yoga and invite y'all to join us as well. And on Sunday, it will be Yoga at the Rocket, uh, at 2 o'clock in the afternoon at the Davidson Center. That is a sight to behold. And then finally, on Saturday, it will be Marina Day at Ditto Landing. We had a meeting today, uh, with Mr. Hamilton to talk about plans for Ditto. There are great things happening at Ditto and this is an opportunity to come down and see the new excitement at Ditto. Marina Day will be on Saturday from 11:00 a.m. to 4:00 p.m. There will be barbecue, music, food trucks, and all kinds of great things. So I hope y'all will join us.
Councilman Kling?
Thank you, Mr. President. Well, there have been some interesting and exciting meetings that are taking place in the district that I've had a chance to go out to. Uh, attended meetings of, uh, Madison Heights Neighborhood Association, Holiday Homes Neighborhood Association, and Merrimack Mill Village Association. And it's kind of great just to get out. People like this time of the year. Not too hot, not too cool. People come out, uh, they're enjoying the extra hour of daylight savings time and they're getting a chance to get acquainted with their neighbors and everything. And, uh, a lot of great, uh, yard work is taking place. People sprucing up their homes, making their neighborhoods look better, and it's, uh, just a lot of positives there that are taking place. The, um, uh, town meeting that I have will be coming up, uh, this month. It'll be on Monday, June the 20th at 6:00 p.m. Again, it's 6:00 p.m., not 7:00. We've changed it. And it'll be at the, uh, meeting room, uh, in the library. And everyone is invited. Always enjoy those things, very informal. Uh, we can talk about whatever folks who come want to talk about. The only rule we have is no one wears a necktie. And, uh, other than that, uh, these are very free-flowing. Gives me a chance to get a good perspective and learn things that need to be worked on. And, uh, I think all of us up here would agree, we, we've got some great department heads and city employees that handle these emails, uh, that council members send them concerning city issues or constituents that have, uh, issues that they want to have addressed. And we very much appreciate the great work that, uh, you department heads and your folks do, uh, uh, for, for us and for the community. Mr. President, that's all I have. Thank you.
All right, sir. I want to announce that the city council now has a new intern. He's a graduate of UNA, working on a master's, uh, at Alabama University in planning. And of course, his name is James Austin Brass. He likes to be called Br- Austin. James Austin Brass. He wants to be called Austin. I would like to simply say tonight that how delighted I am that on last Tuesday, uh, the Recreation Department, the administration opened a new splash pad at the Shower Center. And the children were a delightful opportunity to see all of them participating and that we are just excited to have that there. And it's open to the public. And when you get ready to go up, uh, just feel free to go by the Shower Center and get cooled off. Let me say for the record, Councilman Cover is not here tonight. Uh, he, uh, asked me to announce for him that he will be having his town hall meeting for the Rock Creek and Bridge Water subdivisions on Monday, June the 20th, 2016, at 6:30 p.m. at Good Shepherd's Church located at 1418 Old Railroad Bed Road in Madison. The public is invited to attend. Thirteen unfinished business items for action. We have a substitute, uh, for the record, that we want to bring before you, uh, at this time.
Ms. Chairman, I move for, uh, to approve ordinance number 16-327, substitute A, amending Chapter 3, Article 2, Subsection C of Section 327 Arts and Entertainment District, the Code of Ordinances of the City of Huntsville, Alabama, to modify the Quigley District.
Second?
Uh, Ms. Chairman, if I may, I appreciate, uh, the council and the administration agreeing to hold this item. Two weeks ago, I was unable to be here due to my daughter's graduation and some of my citizens had concerns about this particular issue. Uh, since that time, we've been able to meet and I think we've addressed their concerns. I appreciate Jim McGuffey, the police force, and Joy McKee for, uh, attending the public meeting. Substitute A makes some minor modifications, uh, that the citizens wish to have, and I'll ask Mr. McGuffey to explain those for the council.
Sure. Members of the council, uh, the ordinance tonight before you is a modification to the Quigley Arts and Entertainment District boundary. Uh, we're adding two areas, as you can see on the map. On the west side of the district is what we know as Lot K, which is across from the post office on Clinton. Uh, the smaller area, which is right here at the intersection of Holmes and Green, is also an area we're looking to modify. This is a zoomed-in portion of that area. This is the entrance to their building and what we've, what we would ask to do is, is add the street, uh, and, and move the district five feet off this entrance to give them, uh, ample area to access their building. And that's what we would like for you to, um, to review tonight.
Ms. Chairman, and, and like I said, we've met with the citizens and this is what they requested and, and so I hope the council will approve this tonight.
I'd like any comments from the public. Would you come up and state your name?
Russell Borman, 301 Holmes Avenue. Uh, me and our, our neighbors are directly affected by this change, the entertainment district. Um, you know, everyone wants to support, uh, live, work, and play downtown. Uh, that's why we moved there, for work, live, and play. But to be successful, there needs to be a balance between the live and the work and the play. Um, I'd like to thank Mark Russell, uh, Jim McGuffey, the people from South Precinct, and Joy McKee for meeting with us and addressing our concerns. Um, we, we're concerned about how it affects the quality of life and the events are, and what types of events may be, uh, planned for the, um, area immediately in front of our, our residents. This is where we live. But, um, we, uh, I want to, I'd like to thank all those people for, uh, listening to us and, uh, making these adjustments, um, and for the council for hearing from the public. As you, uh, as you continue to develop downtown, um, please don't overlook the residents who invested in downtown as well. We live here. Thank you.
Comments?
Can I say something, Dr.?
Sure. Go ahead.
Um, Russell and, and, and Joe, thank, thank all of y'all for, for being part of this process. This is one of the new things that we're gonna have to do as we go through downtown. We've always wanted people to live downtown. Now they're living downtown. Now we're gonna have to adjust and, and we had to adjust. Greenville did the same thing. They wanted people living downtown. Started living downtown, then, uh, as, as their officials told us, everybody wants to come out at 2:00 in the morning and hoop and holler and they have loud, loud cars and wake up the residences. And so they've had to do some adjustment. They have, uh, garbage trucks that come in at 4:00 in the morning and drop it, uh, and empty and, and then they've, um, uh, have woken up residences. So as, as we move through this process, this is part of the process of making sure that we do have people who can live downtown, enjoy the downtown area, but also that, that we're, uh, cognitive of the, um, of the residents as they come through. And so thank y'all for working through this process. It will not be the last process we work through. There will probably be several others, uh, as we come through this, this. But this is part of making sure that, um, that, that everybody's rights are taken care of in there. So thank you for, for your participation in this.
Follow-up discussion, councilmembers? Okay. Will ask for a motion now?
Ms. Chairman, I've already made a motion. We just need to make the vote.
Already have had the motion made, okay. Those that support the motion, which you indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Poses no. That item has passed. Unfinished business, item two. Uh, B, ordinance number 16362, to declare certain equipment surplus and to be donated to Downtown Huntsville, Inc., introduced May 26, 2016.
Ms. Chairman, I move to declare the certain equipment surplus.
Second? It's been moved and properly second to declare certain equipment surplus. Those that support that motion, which you indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Poses no. It has passed. C, ordinance number 16363, declaring property owned by the City of Huntsville located at 2400 Bell Avenue, surplus, and authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement between the City of Huntsville and Free Al- Alabama LLC for said property, introduced May 26, 2016.
Ms. Chairman, I move to approve.
Second?
It's been moved and properly second to approve this action. Those that support the motion, which you indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Poses no. It has passed. D, a resolution number 16364, to adopt the Madison County, Alabama Natural Hazard Mitigation Plan Five-Year Update, introduced May 26, 2016.
Move to approve.
Second?
It's been moved and properly second that this item will be approved. Those that support it, which you say aye?
Aye.
Poses no. Item has passed. New business items for introduction. Introduction of an ordinance declaring certain equipment surplus and to be sold at public auction. B, introduction of an ordinance amending Chapter 9, cemetery, of the Code of Ordinances of the City of Huntsville, Alabama. C, introduction of an ordinance annexing 29.17 acres of land lying south of Harve Island Road and north of Bill Matthews Road. New business items for consideration.
Ms. Chairman, I'd like to hold 15A, 15B, 15H, 15I, 15O, and 15S.
Okay. Uh, Councilman, would you repeat those?
Yes, I certainly will. 15A is in Alpha, 15B, 15H is in Henry, 15I, 15O, and 15S is in Sam.
Did everybody get those?
A, B, H, I, O, S.
15A, B, H, I, S, and is it, did you have J?
No, I'm sorry, sir.
I had O and then S.
O and then S.
Correct.
I get it right here. Okay. All right. 15C, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and the low bidder, Christopher Contractors, Inc., for Pulaski Pike Pedestrian Improvement Project 71-16SW05. D, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement between the City of Huntsville and Pine Lawn Farm for the lease of farmland in North Huntsville Industrial Park. E, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement between the City of Huntsville and McDonald Farms for the lease of farmland in Common Research Park. F, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into a lease agreement between the City of Huntsville and McDonald Farms for- and McDonald Farms for the lease of farmland in Greenbrier Area. G, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement between the City of Huntsville and Low Bidder Recontracting Services, Inc., for resurfacing our residential streaks twenty sixteen. Phase one, project number seventy-one dash sixteen RR zero two. J?
I'm sorry, sir. J's been deleted.
It's been deleted. Okay. Thank you. K, a resolution authorizing the city attorney to settle the claim, uh, Tenasha Smith. I, L, a resolution authorizing the clerk treasurer to invoke bank independence letter of credit number two zero eight nine five zero three nine for lender phase one in Jones Valley subdivision. M, a resolution authorizing the acceptance of donations. N? N is being held? I missed it.
No, I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
No, it's not.
I'm sorry.
It is fine?
Yeah.
Okay. Ordinance amending budget ordinance number fifteen dash six forty-two by changing the appropriated funding in various departments and fund. P, a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into the agreement with the low bidder meeting specification as outlined in the attached summary bid for acceptance. Q, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute change order number one and final to the contract between the City of Huntsville and Pierce Manufacturing for construction of one enforcer, one oh seven, ascended area of fire apparatus. R, a resolution authorizing the acquisition of right-of-way for Cantillon Road improvement.
Ms. Chairman, I move for consolidation, approval of fifteen C through fifteen G, fifteen K through fifteen N, fifteen P through fifteen R.
Second.
It's been moved to consolidate the said items that was mentioned by Councilman Russell. Those that support that, would you indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose is no. Has been approved. All right. Resolution. Yeah. Okay. Thank you. Fifteen A, resolution authorizing the mayor to execute change order number one, is agreement between the City of Huntsville and Recontracting Services, Inc., for Clinton Avenue Performing Arts Project, project number sixty-five dash fifteen dash SP thirty-three. Move for approval?
Second.
It's been moved and second that item fifteen A will be approved. Those?
Ms. Chairman, I have questions.
Go ahead. Question?
Uh, Ms. Martin, uh, please tell us the amount of this change and, and why it's necessary.
Yes, sir. This is a change order with Reed and it is to upgrade the electrical and irrigation system at SR Butler Green, uh, for the addition of Wi-Fi service in the park. And so the change order increase amount was fifty thousand, two hundred nineteen dollars and twenty-four cents.
And, and did we not think about this before we built the park?
The Wi-Fi was requested after the park was under construction and so the electrical had to be upgraded and then the irrigation to control the irrigation remotely as well.
Thank you.
Other questions? Hearing none. Those that support the motion, would you indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose is no. Fifteen A has passed. B, a resolution authorizing the mayor to execute change order number one, is agreement between the City of Huntsville and Wiregrass Construction Company, Inc., for downtown gateway. Also known as Harvard Road Extension dash REBID, project number sixty-five dash eleven dash RD zero three.
Move to approve.
Second.
Is, discussion?
Yes, sir. I'd like to ask a question from Ms. Martin, since I asked you about the change orders and the other one was a, a bad one, this is a good one, so tell us about this.
Yes, sir. This is a change order with Wiregrass for the downtown gateway or, or, uh, Joseph E. Lowry Boulevard. And what we did here was when we bid the project, a city center development agreement had not been executed and afterwards we changed from a bridge construction to a box culvert to enclose the existing Fagan Creek Channel. So this change order actually decreases the contract amount by the deduct of the bridge by one million, one hundred fifty-eight thousand, six hundred and fifty-eight dollars and ninety-eight cents.
And tell us why we went to a culvert. I'm excited about it, but I think our citizens need to know.
To enclose the, the creek, the channel in order to, uh, uh, increase the, the land mass to, to develop city center.
So someday we can have a greenway there?
Correct. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. There will be connectivity. Uh, the, the bridge would not have allowed us to connect to a culvert, so.
Thank you.
All right. Those that support the motion, would you indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose is no. It passed. H, resolution to support, resolution of support and approval of the EUL Greenway Extension and Trailhead Parking Facility connecting to Redstone Arsenal. Move for approval?
Second.
Discussion?
Ms. Chairman, I have questions.
Go ahead.
Mr. Matston, uh, can you explain this and then tell us, uh, are we paying for it?
Uh, this is really kind of a formality, uh, that comes out of the TAP program with LDOT. They like to have a letter of support for any project like this. This is something that's actually come through. Um, most of the funds actually obligated are, uh, from federal. It's ninety-two thousand federal, uh, twenty-three thousand local, for a total of a hundred and fifteen thousand dollars.
And what is it?
It is that connection that basically passes under five sixty-five that connects Governor's West, uh, to the enhanced use lease agreement site.
Thank you.
Other discussion? Those that support the motion, would you indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose is no. It has passed. A resolution authorizing the mayor to execute a modification to the original agreement between the City of Huntsville and Market Plus Main, new repast strategies for professionals of consulting services related to the development of a comprehensive master plan.
Move to approve.
Second.
Discussion?
Uh, yes, sir. I have questions. Mr. Matson, can you explain this?
Yes, this was, uh, an ad we asked the consultant as part of the big picture process to give us some, uh, deeper analysis of several target sites around the city, what it would take to redevelop them, um, what type of uses might go on them. And they're actually north Huntsville, south Huntsville, kind of scattered around the city. So this is, uh, basically an ask for her to give us a little deeper dive, um, in the economics of redeveloping targeted sites within the city.
And is my memory correct, was the amount six thousand five hundred dollars?
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Other discussion? Those that support the motion, would you indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose is no. It has passed. J has been deleted. O, resolution to proceed with public sales of services, series, twenty sixteen warrants and to subscribe for escrow securities.
Move to approve.
Second.
It's been moved in property second. Discussion?
Yes, sir. Ms. Sergeant, can you explain this, please?
Yes, this resolution is to allow the mayor and myself to, ish, to have the series twenty sixteen warrants be sold pursuant to a public sale as described in our, um, preliminary, preliminary official statement on June fourteenth. The first sale will begin at nine thirty and that's for new money of general, general obligation warrants. The second sale will begin at ten and that is general obligation warrants for the school, also new money. Then at ten thirty, we will have, uh, refunding of city general obligation and at eleven, there will be refunding of school general obligation.
And Ms. Sergeant, could you go over the total amounts for all four?
Yes.
Four parts?
The new money for the city is approximately thirty-six million for, thirty-six point four million dollars. The schools are twenty-eight point three million. Uh, the refunding for the city is forty million eight and the refunding for the schools are thirty-four five.
Could you explain the term refunding so the public understands it and, and the council?
Yes. Those are war, those are bonds that were issued in prior years at higher interest rates. We are currently at actually historic lows in the market, so we can get approximately a six and a half million dollar savings by doing this sale on Tuesday. Um, and it's split approximately fifty-fifty between the city and the schools.
Thank you.
Other questions? Those that support the motion, would you indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose is no. Uh, it has passed.
Ms. Chairman, I believe this will require us to have a special session, which I think you're gonna, you're gonna, uh, notify the public of.
Okay. The special session is Tuesday?
Yes, that is correct. We will require a special session Tuesday afternoon to accept the winning bids that will occur Tuesday morning. I believe that that's been arranged for three PM.
Okay, we got three thirty here?
There's been an adjustment, uh, there was a delay to three thirty because of one of the council members' schedule and they've been able to free up and so they're trying to move it to three because we have to complete that meeting before four o'clock to give notice back to the winning people in the market.
Okay. Okay, just notifying the public and the council that there is a special session on Tuesday at three.
Yes, and in compliance with the requirements, we'll send out the official notification via the web and the media tomorrow, as far as I understand.
Okay. Fifteen S, that was added, uh, to the agenda.
Ms. Chairman, I move for approval.
Second.
It's been moved and second that that item on GE will be, uh, approved. Discussion?
Yes, sir. I have questions. Mr. Davis, since this wasn't on the agenda, it needs to be explained thoroughly. Can you please do that?
Absolutely, uh, Councilman Russell. Uh, council members, back in December, actually December third, council meeting twenty fifteen, we brought you a development agreement, uh, between the City of Huntsville, the Industrial Development Board, Madison County, Limestone County, City of Huntsville with, uh, GE Aviation. Uh, it's been widely publicized, two-hundred million dollar investment, three-hundred jobs. Uh, now has become the time for us to provide our incentive as closing, uh, along with Madison County, Limestone County Industrial Development Board. That will take place on Tuesday for that closing, so tonight we're asking you to formally approve our incentive for the land purchase of one point four million dollars, for which, if you recall back in the development agreement, uh, GE Aviation will pay us a hundred thousand dollars a year, uh, for a period of four hundred thousand dollars. Our, our original investment, as we have always told the public of a million dollars, still holds true.
Thank you.
Other questions?
And, Mr. President, we mu, we might point out that this was, uh, all gone through when we did our development agreement back co, four months ago. Is that about right?
Uh, we passed it in December.
Yeah, and we passed it in December and, um, all of this was, was in that, but this is more to dot an I and cross a T to make sure that we can actually appropriate the money. In the development agreement, we said that we, we would have a land purchase of three point five million dollars, uh, but we did not delineate out how much the city portion of it was. So this is so that we can actually cut the check for the city portion and, uh, and recognize that we are not paying all of the three point five million dollars.
And, and just to remind the council and the public, uh, the annual payroll for this to the community is right at fifteen million dollars annually and new property taxes generated from the project is almost twenty-three million dollars. So, so it's a great investment for the community.
Other questions? Those that support the motion, would you indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose is no. It has passed. Uh, got a deletion here, vacation easement. B, vacation of right-of-ways, none. Deeds for acceptance?
Ms. Chairman, I move for the deed of accept, to accept the deed of U and D easement, Oak Grove Dairy LLC.
Second.
It's been moved in property second that this deed for acceptance would be accepted. Those are some, discussion. Those that support the motion, would you indicate by saying aye?
Aye.
Oppose is no. It has passed. Routine bonds, certifications, none. Look-a-bond mortgages, none. Item seventeen, non-roster communications from the public.
Anyway, when you bring a new item up tonight, I'd like to have a copy of that contract right there to go over that. That's sort of over my head till I take it home, but you're trying, you, you met with county, with the Limestone County and the godfathers of the city and all of you are gonna help develop out in Limestone County. Golly, we need to take care of what we got in this city. I believe in development. I believe in infrastructure, but what you all are doing and how fast you are doing it, you can't take care of what we got in this city. And I'm really disappointed in you about SciQuest. You can spread and give money away in this city, but SciQuest was one of the best things that ever happened for the educational and the kids in this city and none of you stood up there and took up or tried to give them any money. I'm ashamed of you, very much ashamed of you. It's sad that they went out of business and had to go, just like Sears and Pennies that I'm still holding on to. Anyway, the Tiger Grant, I never knew what the Tiger Grant is. It's for greenways and walkways and all that kind of stuff. That's all I hear. Could Tiger Grant not be used for some of this road? And how much money is it gonna cost this city going from Holmes Avenue over to Low Mill? And you're gonna build bridges and overpasses and buy properties and that needs to be brought up right here at this council meeting some night and tell us every inch of the way of what you're gonna do? I personally would like to know. You make so many deals out here and the public don't care. I care for them, but I can't make changes in the city by myself. It's up to the people and the public. We've got to have strong leadership and the public needs to be involved. The city employees needs to have a voice. They can't talk to nobody but me. And that's sad. That's how aerospace industry was run. The top dogs knew from the people and the public and employees as to what was going on. I worked in the airspace over twenty-five years and this, I'm having a hard time getting a hand on and trying to figure out how you all operate. Like I said, and nobody's asking any questions now, Mr. Shires. You didn't let nobody answer for nothing. And you know, Mr. Will Cover does come up with some thing and say, are you gonna answer some of this and this and this? It's okay, Mr. Shires. Maybe I'll get some answers someday. Thank you very much.
Mr. President?
Yes, sir. Uh, if I could respond back on some of these things, uh, of the last, I guess since the last council meeting, we've heard, you know, everybody up here talking about going out to neighborhood organizations. I can think of three neighborhood associations in, uh, in the district I represent that I went out to visit. Uh, Councilman Russell, Dr., I mean, Councilwoman, um, Robinson, Mayor Battle, yourself. And, you know, I think we are listening and we are, you know, doing things. And I think one of the positives that the Mayor Battle and his administration have done have been the renovation revitalization that was taking place in, in some of the inner areas of the city. Uh, Low Mill was mentioned and that's a very deserving neighborhood and there have been some, some very strong and, and I think there'll be some good things in the future that'll be announced about efforts that have taken place for, for Low Mill. Uh, it was an old area, somewhat neglected in the past, but, I mean, there's a lot of things that are taking place. It's, you've got arts over in that area, the city working with the school system on campus, eight oh five, uh, renovation that's taking place, uh, with, in the Merrimack Community with the park and, and everything. So I think we're seeing some good things taking place and it's not like we're up here just, you know, with blank stares, uh, six elected officials and a bunch of staff people are out in neighborhood association meetings. We've got police department folks, uh, uh, we're gonna have Keith Ashley from Community Developments going out to a meeting. Shane Davis has been out at neighborhood meetings. So, you know, we're not perfect up here, but we're not, you know, just sitting up here and not listening to anybody. And I think that just needs to get said every now and then.
Adjourn?
Adjourn.
Ms. Chairman, I move to adjourn.
Meeting ends adjourned.